Well, the clerk, and we're going to adjourn from executive session and back to regular session. The clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
If you will all please rise and join me in the flag of salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and there was sort of a small, little glitch in the agenda as published, and we need to, if there's no objections, to move an item from the business agenda on the budget to the consent agenda, and if there's no objections, we will. It was supposed to be on the consent agenda.
Is it item C, January 26th?
There is no formal report or anything. It should have been on the consent agenda. So, if there's no objections, then the agenda will stand as modified. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Mayor, did you only have one thing to change on the agenda?
This is the City of Kenmore proclamation honoring Thomas Joseph Traeger. Whereas the City of Kenmore lost a valued community leader, activist, and volunteer on March 4th, 2016 with the death of Thomas Joseph Tom Traeger. And whereas Tom Traeger was known as the founding father of the Kenmore Heritage Society, which he organized in 1998, served five years as its first president, and was honored by the society in 2005 with the McMaster Heritage Award for exceptional community service. And whereas Tom Traeger was the driving force behind publication of the award-winning history book, Kenmore by the Lake: A Community History. And whereas Tom Traeger planted the seed for the idea of a history path at Logg Boom Park and worked with a team to bring the project to fruition. Whereas Tom Traeger was a volunteer in an assortment of other civic organizations, including the North Shore Kiwanis Club and the Kenmore Art Show, and worked for betterment of Kenmore and the surrounding North Shore area. And whereas Tom Traeger was a mentor, role model, and advisor to many whose lives he touched during his 30-year career, both as a teacher and in several administrative roles, including that of assistant superintendent with the Shoreline School District. And whereas, late in life, Tom became a painter in watercolors and acrylics, and his artwork has appeared in Kirkland's Park Gallery, at the Kenmore Art Show, and at Alexis Cafe in Bothell. And whereas Tom Traeger was known as someone you could depend on, someone who got things done, and someone who enjoyed life and was known for his quick wit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kenmore City Council, on behalf of the Kenmore community, recognizes the many significant contributions of Tom Traeger, both as a professional and as a volunteer activist, and mourns his death and extends its sincere condolences to Tom's widow Bobby, his children and grandchildren, and all other members of the Traeger family. So, Mrs. Traeger, if you would. He was a tremendous asset to our community, and we were certainly sorry to hear the news, and he will sorely be missed in this city. And again, thank you for finding the strength to come here tonight. We really appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to speak for things that are important to you and your community, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And if the clerk will please call the first person.
Elizabeth Mooney?
Thank you. Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore, and I'm proud to be a Kenmore citizen, president of PERC, People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore, a nonprofit who has partnered with the Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation over a shoreline issue that is related not only to our beloved company and business, Kenmore Air, but also to the proposed demolition by Kiwet General Manson and Washdott on our shores at Lake Point. These two issues are related to each other, and I'm hoping that my council will listen to me tonight because I've just gotten off the phone with Todd Banks of Kenmore Air because we feel with the help of Representative Jerry Palet that we have found common ground and principles, and that we would prefer not to hold up the smaller project at Kenmore Air that would benefit our community and build something other than a fight to have environmental health and public health and safety. What happened is that, well, what will happen on Wednesday unless we settle and the city attorney and staff have apparently told the council that you cannot talk to us, even though we're talking and trying to get community to work together, we would appreciate you trying to settle with us, and again, on our common ground and principles that we've worked out with Todd Banks. Nobody wants our shoreline in our community to become industrialized by demolition of old bridges by industrial giants like the company that wants to come in here and demolish it on our shoreline. So, originally, what happened is PERC and Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation objected to the city's lack of requiring testing at Kenmore Air before they did their small project near the KGM Washdott demolition area at Lake Point where the old 520 floating bridge wants to come in and be demolished. Department of Ecology recommended testing there because, as you know or don't know, there are high levels of dioxins, PCBs, DDT, et cetera, that exist in that area of the Kenmore Navigation Channel, et cetera, in the marinas. But after lots of hours of caring volunteer work, we have found common ground with Todd Banks, and he is not, and his company is not, the one that should be the sacrificial lamb of the industrialization caused by the large company that's trying to come in here, again, I say, to demolish bridges, and so there are many citizens who are asking that the city understand that PERC and Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation are trying to work with the city, trying to already have a relationship, thanks to Jerry Palet working with it and with Todd Banks at Kenmore Air. So, we would appreciate it if our attorney would call us tomorrow, and rather than wasting money on attorney's fees, that we could come to a settlement table. The judge at Shoreline Hearings Board said, "When it is a community like this, it is much, much better that you work things out as a community rather than have judges decide." So, here's what Jerry Palet suggested. Rather, an agreement seems feasible in which the city states its understanding that, A, if a zoning change was requested which involved uses that relied on resumption or increased barge traffic--
Mooney, could you please wrap this up?
It says 20 seconds. "The city, consistent with longstanding interpretations and goals, would expect an environmental review under SEPA. Such environmental review would require assessment of how barge traffic may disturb contaminated sediments due to both potential environmental and health impacts."
It's 35 seconds over.
Oh, sorry. I did look. Okay. Please have, please help us settle as a community.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Peter Leahy?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
My name's Peter Lance. I live at 6501 Northeast 151st Street in Kenmore. I'm here to comment on Elizabeth Mooney's recent comments here, but only from a different perspective entirely. I'm a little disappointed in the city here for getting involved in this. You threw Kenmore Air a bone and gave them a permit, which is fine, to build their pier, and it looked very reasonable. They appealed it, and at that point, you could have backed away and not got, invested a lot of city resources on this pissing match between Elizabeth Mooney and her groups, and I'm not involved with them, and Kenmore Air, and let them fight it out on their own and let the winner come away with it. But you guys are in the middle of this thing, and I'm very disappointed that all this money and energy that's going into sorting this out when Kenmore Air is the beneficiary if they win, and of course, they've got a dirty little secret they do not want to let out, and they're going to fight vigorously to keep testing from happening, and if they win, so be it. But this is not a place for the city, and it's not a role of good governance for you folks to come in here and spend a lot of money sorting this out. This is for, you've got two citizen groups here involved that should be sorting this out on their own, and they really don't need your help at this point in time, and you don't need to be spending your money to sort it out. If Elizabeth Mooney wins, they'll be testing. It's not the end of the world, and it would be a good thing, in that you would then be able to do better governance because you would have more information about the status of the lake, and Kenmore Air would not be allowed to hide whatever they don't want to come out, which is understandable that Kenmore Air does not want to have testing done, as any other landowner along there would not want to have testing done. Totally understandable. But you don't have to get involved in this. You threw the bone, you did Kenmore Air the favor, but it's time to back away now and let Kenmore Air spend the money, do the resources, and do the fight to not have this testing done, and see if they can win, and see if they can prevail. I don't know who's going to win, but this is not your fight. You don't have a dog in it, and Kenmore Air has the resources to defend themselves if they see that it's fit. So, I would just encourage you in the future to just let things go their course and let these folks sort things out. You don't have to, it's also, it's unseemly. You're putting a lot of money into helping somebody hide something they don't want to have exposed. It just does not look good. It feels stinky. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lance.
Patrick O'Brien?
Technical difficulty. Hang on a second here. There we go. All right. Patrick O'Brien, 6330 Northeast 181st Street, Kenmore, Washington, 98028. There you go. What I'm going to talk about is the history of what you, as a governmental body, inherited. You did not create the problem. You inherited a problem. And the whole message here is what is prudent and reasonable to your first duty, which is the health and safety of the public. Not what's expeditious, not what will put $10 million more in the city's coffers, but what is the right thing to do for the citizens who you all represent. And like I said, you inherited a huge problem. And you know the history of the Kenmore industrial site, and it started a long, long time ago before Nigel Herbig was even a twinkle in his father's eye. But at any rate, I'm trying to get a laugh, Nigel. At any rate, there is a long history of hazardous dumping, everything from the I-5 debris. The state, not the City of Kenmore, put that in the water. We've seen a hazardous waste dump. We've seen different ships clean their hulls, so all the copper and lead on the bottom of ships used for defouling is in that navigation channel. It's reasonable to assume that they're still there. So, what are we going to do about it? You inherited the problem. The state has abused this area several times in their use, their misuse of our waters. And why now does the city act as the applicant for the various permits? And you all were shocked to find out that there was going to be a demolition of the 520 bridge there, and yet the people who applied falsified the information on the application, and yet it's still somehow going forward because every day I watch them moving more equipment in, assembling it. They have plans to demolish that bridge here, no matter what the City of Kenmore says. So, who's at fault? Is it you as a body who was shocked that this was even going to happen here, or is it staff who worked with the contractor supposedly for a year and didn't get the information to you on the nature of what was going to go on here? There's been no accountability of staff that was involved in this, and I think it's high time that staff was held accountable for these things. So, the next thing I'd like to talk about is, on Friday, the Simex plant was putting out outrageous fumes, and I invited other people to come over. Puget Sound Clean Air, he called me today. He said, "I had the day off. The city people weren't involved because they were out of the office." I don't know what the problem was, but for three hours, that plant with no steam, no visible steam plume, had chemical smells coming up the hill, and they were very, very, they were bad. I mean, it was one of the worst days yet. So, I know you all don't want to see the demolition. I think it's time that you find somebody that can work with the community, and you work with the community that you represent to find a way to protect the public health, and you ensure that the testing, based on the history, is taken care of. I'm almost done there, Mayor. I see that look. I know that look. That the testing is reasonable and prudent to do, and to not do so is a miscarriage of your office and your duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Anybody else?
No.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Ms. Mooney, Mr. Lance, Mr. O'Brien, City Attorney. I think you have some comments you want to make, some of this information.
May I, because I'd like to clarify--
Yes, please.
--the comments made by Ms. Mooney.
Yes, please.
She is talking about a Shoreline's Hearings Board appeal from a Shoreline substantial development permit issued by the city to Kenmore Air for a minor dock improvement project. That hearing for that appeal starts Wednesday. The city has made it very clear to Ms. Mooney and PERC and all of the petitioners in the case that the city will consider seriously and entertain any settlement proposal that they provide to us. The city received no written settlement proposal until last Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, I believe, through a state representative. The city seriously considered that proposal and felt that it was not in the best interest of the city or of the citizens of the city because that proposal did not deal with this particular property owned by Kenmore Air. The proposal was for the city to commit itself to do certain things that would affect other property owners when other property owners in the vicinity came to the city with an application for a permit or approval. We felt that agreeing to a settlement proposal with that basic premise was not in anyone's best interest. I want to also point out that if we're talking about this permit approval, the city approved the permit. The applicant did not. So, what we're talking about is the city's power and authority to issue a permit of this nature. The appeal is from the city's decision, not from the decision of the property owner, and that is why the city is and has chosen to defend its permit in the Shoreline's Hearings Board. The final thing I want to say is that one of the major issues in the case is, as stated by the petitioners, including PERC and Ms. Mooney, is whether the Shoreline Management Act, the Shoreline Management Act Regulations, or the city's Shoreline Master Program requires testing of the sediment in Lake Washington to be accomplished by every property owner along the shoreline of Lake Washington and the City of Kenmore, when that property owner is applying for a Shoreline substantial development permit or a Shoreline conditional use permit. That is the issue in the case, which is much broader than just Kenmore Air and its property. So, I wanted to clarify all of that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gasbuma. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Consent Agenda stands passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing. Public hearing on a motion to allow indoor storage as a temporary use for up to one year to property located at 15036 79th Avenue Northeast, which is owned by the North Shore Fire District, and zoned public, semi-public, subject to conditions. Ms. Ausley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are preparing for a public hearing for a motion to continue for another year indoor storage as a temporary use in a facility that is owned by the North Shore Fire District. In your packet, you will see a letter from Chief Torpen to extend this temporary use. This is for the former fire station in the Morlins area on 70th Avenue Northeast. Just about a year ago, the council extended the ability to have the temporary storage use for one year, which is the maximum amount allowed for any particular action in our code, and the tenant who is using the temporary storage is a business who previously leased storage from the city in the Kenmore Village property. And so, there are several conditions that were agreed upon between the city and the district. They are listed in the letter from the district as well as the agenda bill. Quickly, they include that storage is the only permitted inside the structure, is only used permitted inside the structure. No alcohol or other hazardous materials will be stored in the facility. The building will be equipped with a monitored alarm system. The grounds will be maintained at the current level of care, and visits to the site for pickup and drop-off will be infrequent approximately once per week and limited to daytime hours. When this arrangement began last year, we agreed with the fire district that it would be a good idea to check in with neighbors to the property to let them know in advance what was about to begin, and there had been no concerns from any of the neighboring businesses or residents, no complaints whatsoever in the last year. The district feels like as it explores what's going to be the long-term use for this property, this is a very reasonable way to offset their holding costs and to deter any vandalism to the site. So, we are recommending that the council approve a motion to, again, allow another one-year period of time for this temporary use in this particular zone. The beginning date would be May 15th, 2016 to May 14th, 2017. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I will declare the public hearing open on a motion to allow indoor storage as a temporary use for up to one year period to property located at 15036 79th Avenue Northeast, which is owned by the North Shore Fire District and zoned public, semi-public, subject to conditions.
There's no one signed up.
Anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to be heard on the motion to allow indoor storage as temporary use? Anybody wishing to be heard? Hearing none. I will declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda is an approved motion to allow indoor storage as a temporary use for up to one year on property located at 15036 79th Avenue Northeast, which is owned by the North Shore Fire District and zoned public, semi-public. Ms. Ausley.
Happy to answer any further questions, and also Representative from the district is present.
Any questions? Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion to allow indoor storage as a temporary use for up to one-year period on property located at 15036 79th Avenue Northeast, which is owned by the North Shore Fire District and zoned public, semi-public. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
7-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Adopt Ordinance Number 16-0419, Providing for the Establishment of Maximum Periods of Parking on City Streets and in City-Owned Parking Lots. Ms. Harris?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Following, I have Police Chief Cliff Suther up here as well. So, following City Council's discussion and direction at the March 28th City Council meeting, attached in your packet is Ordinance Number 16-0419 for Council Action. The ordinance provides for the establishment of maximum periods of parking on city streets and in city-owned parking lots, and adds sections 10-20-040, limited-period parking zones, and 10-20-050, permit exemption from maximum parking period, and renumbers prior section 10-20-040 on violation penalty to 20-20-060 of the Kenmore Municipal Code. If I can accept any questions? Mayor?
Questions? All right. The chair then will entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 16-0419, Providing for the Establishment of Maximum Periods of Parking on City Streets and City-Owned Parking Lots. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmembers Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
7-0.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number C was moved to the Consent Agenda. IMD, Transportation Impact Fee and Concurrent Update and Discussion. Ms. Overlees? And Ms. Mint?
Would you have a PowerPoint presentation this evening if you want to raise your screens and while we have the, get that technical thing going here, give a brief introduction. So, I have Chris Overlees and Kendra Bryland, who's-- So I have Chris Overlees and Kendra Bryland, who's a consultant with Fair and Peers, who's been helping us on this project. So if you recall, in 2014, you adopted the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And since then, we've been working on regulations that would implement the transportation element. And if you remember, we have a new way of doing business, more of a multimodal approach for looking at traffic improvements and growth. The last time we were here in September of 2015, and at that time, we gave you an update on the regulations and on the proposed impact fees. And at that time, you asked staff to go and take a look at the impact fees and calculation for restaurants, which we did. And we were able to justify a lower rate, which is lower than what it currently is. So the current rate is $47.23, and we were able to lower that to $22.64. So this evening, we would like to do a little bit of a refresher, as it's been a while since we talked to you, so to kind of bring you back up to speed. And then we'll be looking for your direction, and hopefully getting direction to move forward with scheduling a public hearing in May and bringing back an ordinance so you can adopt the new regulations. So it looks like we're ready. Great. So I shall turn it over to Kendra, and I think Chris is going to drive the PowerPoint.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me again. So Debbie did a pretty good job of describing why I'm here. I'm going to be doing a little bit of recap that we talked about back in September, but September was a long time ago. It was the beginning of the school year. My son, who's a kindergartner, is now almost done with his first year of school, so I thought a little bit of recap would be good, but also to kind of let you guys know where we are and what the recommendations that we have are, and definitely get your input today. So just as a recap, the 2015 transportation element was really structured around this concept of a layered transportation network. And very near and dear to our heart in working on this was that it would be a real multimodal look, so a shift away from what you have today or what you had actually prior to the transportation element being updated, which was very vehicular-oriented. But it was also a recognition that every street can't serve all users well. We need to really prioritize and be smart with the city's resources. So we developed this layered transportation network in Kenmore that looked at, you know, what are those most critical facilities for pedestrians, bikes, transit, and auto freight? Again, you know, really, the focus here, not only in the transportation element, but the implementation items that we're working on now are really shifting our focus from just being vehicular-focused to looking through the lens of all of the transportation users. Go on. And again, just a recap, and this is something I remember showing on the screen back in 2015, or even 2014, when we were working on the transportation element, but really explaining how the layered network really supported the development of multimodal level of service policies, and then how those translate into the transportation project list and the implementation items that we're now talking about. So not only the 20-year project list, which has been adopted as a part of the plan, and the six-year capital improvement program that city staff are leading, but also now the concurrency and the update of your impact fee program. So as a recap, this is your previous level of service policy, which was focused exclusively on vehicular operations and kind of your experience as you're driving through Kenmore. And while that's certainly very, very important, by structuring a level of service policy solely around vehicular operations, really constrained kind of the types of projects that the transportation element could support, it also constrained the types of projects that could be supported as a part of an impact fee program. So if you can go to the next slide. This slide here, which I remember showing last fall, kind of shows you how having a multimodal level of service policy really opens up the opportunities in terms of the projects that you can support as a part of your impact fee program. And I'd say tonight, as we talk about the updates to the impact fee program, you know, the most major and sweeping change is that we're now funding a much more diverse project list than was previously funded. So before I dive into transportation concurrents or transportation impact fee, I wanted to demystify a few terms that, you know, I certainly up to a few years ago found confusing, and I know a lot of folks struggle with. So first of all, what is concurrency? And concurrency is really nothing more than, it's a state law here in Washington. Florida also has it. And it's just requiring that you are building your transportation system concurrent with growth. So a lot of communities have concurrency systems, like your previous one, that was structured all around vehicular operations. And essentially, it said that you couldn't develop if it was going to require an intersection to, you know, add a little bit of delay. It focused exclusively on the vehicular experience. More and more now, more communities are starting to think about it more broadly. And so while we do certainly care about the vehicular operations, we want to make sure that you're completing your entire transportation network concurrent with growth.
Is this basically because a lot of intersections are failing? And there has to be another way of sort of calculating this, so let's go with transit because our vehicle intersections are failing?
Well, I wouldn't put it that way. What I would say is, first of all, there's a recognition that people are going to use a variety of means. And so we've invested in the vehicular system for a long time, and we want to make sure we're not forgetting about those other users, too. But the other piece is a focus that we need to recognize that, you know, there is going to be some peak hour congestion, and sometimes it can be substantial. But the opportunities to build our way out of that peak hour congestion aren't necessarily going to be financially feasible, and they're not necessarily going to be in line with your other community values. So it's a broader way of thinking about concurrency.
But still, a level of service at a given intersection cannot be influenced by a state facility, correct? So in other words, the fact that we may have an intersection at 175th, or 170th, or 181st, failing because of 522, it can't fail because it's a state facility that's causing it, correct?
You are correct that 522 is not subject to concurrency. However, in the transportation element, we did actually model future growth and future operations, and that's something we're very mindful. As a part of the transportation element, some of the key improvements we'd like to see would be another crossing of 522, for example. That would be one of the best things you can do to provide some mobility for this community, you know, kind of in the context of 522, which is something that you do have to live with.
Thank you.
So the other term which folks often think about with concurrency is transportation impact fees. And while concurrency and transportation impact fees do have some inner linkages, I like to stress that transportation impact fees are first and foremost a financing mechanism. So it's really a way of paying for your transportation system. Now certainly, they help build the transportation system over time concurrent with growth, so that's where kind of that connection is. But transportation impact fees are a mechanism that many communities use to fund transportation, but not all. All communities in Washington State are subject to concurrency, but not all choose to fund impact fees. Kenmore has had transportation impact fees for almost a decade, and it served you well in helping move forward some projects. It's a one-time charge assessed on development. It can fund projects that add capacity for future development. It cannot fund roadway maintenance. It can't fund projects that are exclusively used to address existing deficiencies. And many communities are starting to more broadly interpret transportation impact fees and what they can be charged for. The state law says that it needs to be spent on projects within the right-of-way of streets and roads, but more and more communities are thinking, well, that doesn't just mean where the cars are within that right-of-way, but it also can mean those sidewalk facilities, bicycle facilities. It can't be trails. We do know that, that for transportation impact fees, trails are not eligible use. But so many of the projects on your impact fee, or on your transportation element project list, are eligible for impact fees, so we looked at those. Your current, just so you know, your current transportation impact fee is about $7,200 per PM peak hour vehicle trip. So what we did in updating our impact fee program was we looked at the projects that are on your current transportation element 20-year list, and we looked at those projects that really fit within the state guidelines of what can be funded. And you can see here, we've got about $106 million worth in projects. And so here's, this diagram here kind of shows the process that we went through. First, we looked at those eligible projects, and that's what I showed on the previous slide. And then the first step we needed to take was to understand which aspects of those projects were eligible. And so the first part was to take out those projects that were funding existing deficiencies. And so we used some analytical techniques to kind of pull that out and take out that aspect of those project costs. And what you were left with were the project, the portion of those projects that were addressing growth. And, but then of growth, those trips, not all of that growth is related to Kenmore. Some of that is project coming through on 522, some of that's Kirkland folks using one-eater drive, so we needed to strip off that. So we used your travel model to understand how many of those trips were related to Kenmore versus how many of that was non-city growth. And what we got then was we divided those eligible project costs by the amount of growth that we're anticipating within the city over the next 20 years. And a big shift here, though, was that we didn't just look at vehicle trips. Again, we're supporting a more multimodal project list that's more in line with the community values that were adopted as a part of the transportation element. And so what we looked at was a unit called mobility units. Mobility units are, I'd say, a more generic unit. They're not just people driving around cars, but they're trips that are made by walking and biking, cars, transit, HOV, SOV. So it looked at that trip-making behavior. And so a person trip end is really what a mobility unit is. And so the-
Can I jump in for one sec?
Oh, yes.
Just as a side note, I was able to speak at the Bike Summit a few weeks ago, and I mentioned this idea of person trips and mobility units. And the audience really perked up and found that quite intriguing, being bicycle enthusiasts. They were glad to see that the focus isn't just on cars, but that it's focused on multi, multiple modes of transportation, including bikes. And so we scored some good points at the Bike Summit by talking about this proposal.
I had a question related to that. So is this a concept that you've kind of invented this term, or is this a standard that other people are using as well?
Actually, the city of Redmond's using this term, so I cannot take credit for coining it.
When we embarked on this process, we didn't want to be the first, but we're definitely in the front of the pack as far as changing how we're doing business this way.
Great.
I noticed a difference in the slide that you have on the screen and the one we have in our presentation, in our packet. You're saying the fee would be approximately $5,900 per PM person trip, and the packet says $6,500 per PM person trip.
You're looking at the old one? Where would that go? Shoot, I went way too far.
Well, I think I can answer the mayor's question. We have been looking at, over time, we have looked at project lists, and there have been some updates to the project, the project list. And so I think if this might be a really old version of the PowerPoint, I think at one point, we didn't have a $6,500, but there have been some changes in the assumptions over time. But we've had that $5,900 since at least the December draft.
Well, I'm looking at the notes here for the meeting tonight.
I'm not, yeah, I forwarded Kendra's presentation on to get uploaded, so I can't tell you what happened.
I'm looking at page 109 of 333.
Oh, you're probably looking, Your Honor, you're probably maybe looking at an attachment that we added to the council report.
Very well, it just seems to go right along with the slide presentation.
Yep, but this one has been, this has been updated since last fall.
Okay, and this is last fall, so we've got in our packet.
I attached that as an attachment. I can't remember B or C, so you'd have history.
So we've lowered it then.
Phew, great. Heart attack, okay.
So the new fee would be, is currently with the project list that we're looking at in hand, is about $5,900 per PM peak hour person trip. And so I know, I just said a few slides ago, that it was, it's about $7,000 per vehicle trip today. And so again, remember that a vehicle trip and a person trip is something that's slightly different. And by shifting our focus to the person trip, what it's allowing us to do is fund a much more multimodal list of projects. But the end result, when we look at, when we calc out, you know, kind of for a household, for different types of uses within the city, it's in the same ballpark. Some uses are a little higher. In fact, residential uses tend to be a little higher, whereas commercial uses actually tend to be a little lower, and that's just because of the trip-making profile of those guys. And as Debbie mentioned in the introduction, you guys thought it was important for us to go back, sharpen our pencils, and look at the restaurant rate. And we think as we started looking at, again, these were all established procedures. We didn't do anything new or completely unprecedented here, but we thought there was definitely some data to support the fact that restaurants generally in Kenmore are going to have a little bit more pass-by trips, given the characteristic nearby 522. The other piece is, you guys are a restaurant-poor community, and so that means that I would suspect that if a restaurant came into Kenmore, you'd have a lot of Kenmore residents that want to patronize that restaurant. And so those two things together were able to support a lower per-square-foot rate for restaurants.
Are we going, are you going to clarify this PM person trip?
I would be happy to answer why it's lower.
No, no, I'm just curious. So I, husband and wife, working, both work. One takes the bus, one takes the car. They both get $5,900 because each one is a separate PM person trip? So really, the impact fee to that household then is, what is that, $11,800?
Well, in terms of the way that you're calculating it, in terms of a household, we don't go so specific, of course, to know what everybody's trip-making is going to come out of a household. So it is an average number, and that's something that makes this program reasonable for staff to manage. But in terms of the trip-making, household behavior, certainly any household, we've got some data to support how many trips that they're tending to generate. We recognize that not every trip's going to be by car. Some trips will be by transit, some trips will be by foot, some trips will be by car. And so on the average, we have some good data to support the person trip-making behavior of that household. And so it's really, again, in charging for the person trip rather than the vehicular trip, it's allowing us to support a much broader list of projects. Your current program focused on vehicular trip doesn't allow you to do that.
So this table is what you saw last September with a different restaurant rate, which is this number right here. You'll see that currently, impact fees are $47.23 per, is that square foot? And then the new rate, based on what Kendra's additional research and looking at capture rates internal versus external traffic, we could justify $22.64. But beyond that, this table is what we talked about last fall. So Mayor Baker, when you're talking about, remember, this is new construction, so when you go up and look at single-family house, you can look across and see what that looks like.
So on the single-family house, then PM person trip rate is 1.45 people, but husband and wife both work, so they're only paying for 0.45 on the second wife, second person?
Well, what the people end up, when they buy the house, what they actually do, we won't know, so it will be all based on our table.
She was nodding yes.
It's on the average person trip generation of a single-family house. So in your packets is some work, and we actually should give some credit to Rod Casagumo over there. He helped us with much of the code amendments, but we were able to go through these sections of code and update them to be in line with the new impact fee program, in line with the kind of the different kind of intent and broader policy guidance of the transportation element. And so these- And so these are the sections that city staff kind of looked through and asked us to provide updates to. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. In fact, I have all the track changes markups here, but I certainly don't want to put you to sleep either. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And beyond, and beyond the restaurant rate change, this is what's new for this conversation, is we've actually taken our conversation over the past year and made these code changes.
Councilmember Herbig.
This is getting a little into the weeds here, but I was just wondering, I was looking through the spreadsheet, and I saw that the impact fee was higher for a gas station than for a gas station that also had a convenience store. Was I reading that correctly? And if so, why? That just seems kind of, I don't know.
You know, this is all-around data that's collected. So none of this is somebody kind of in a back room kind of coming up with this. This is based on surveys. So kind of how these average rates have come up is that the average, the Institute of Traffic Engineers has gone out, they've collected lots of studies for most of these uses, and this is just kind of the average. I understand kind of your question on that specific one, and I don't have any better answers for that one.
Fair enough.
I could make a proposal. It's because some people are walking from the neighborhood and buying stuff at the convenience store.
Potentially.
Instead of driving.
Councilmember Sperry.
So I'm gonna go big, big picture, which, so with the new adjustments, are we expecting any major difference in the amount of revenue that would come in? I know that there's multiple factors in that with the new rates, I guess is what I'm trying to say. What my sense is that it's just another way to get to the same number to basically allocate the costs of new, what we need for concurrency, basically.
We've run the numbers, just kind of back a napkin for some of our larger projects that we're anticipating, and it's pretty much, it's very similar.
Very similar, okay. Thank you.
Gas stations, with, with, convenience stores without? I thought here in the downtown region, or downtown area, they were prohibited.
Gas stations.
Gas stations.
New gas stations.
With, with or without convenience stores. Part of the downtown plan was no new gas stations were allowed.
That's correct in some zones, yes. That's correct in some of the downtown zones, yes.
Okay.
This is a citywide impact fee, so I guess I can't speak to whether gas stations.
Okay. That's fine. Any other questions? Hearing none. So we are looking to move this forward and come back with an enabling ordinance, and that's it. So any further direction you want to give them for a public hearing and in preparing an ordinance on the proposed amendments? So silence means you have a direction.
Yay, we'll be back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You know, I can remember 2005, 2006, spending many meetings going over the impact fees and how are we going to set them, going through the project list, looking what the costs were going to be, where that money was going to come from, and how much was going to be grant money, and how much was going to be this? This process that you're taking us through is much easier.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is review of recent amendments to the state marijuana statutes and council direction on proposed amendments to Kenmore's marijuana rules. Ms. Mintz and Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you very much. So the reason we're here tonight is to discuss some state legislation that was passed in 2015 with respect to marijuana legislation. And we wanted to make you aware of those changes and see if there was any interest in changing any of the rules that you previously adopted with respect to marijuana businesses. So I'm going to ask Laurie to go through those, and she, I think we do want to put that one, we have one slide here which sort of highlights the questions or direction that we need from council. Or maybe not, maybe we might. So that's the extent of our PowerPoint presentation, is that it's very, very, very short. Is that one slide which summarizes the five questions before council. So what I'm gonna ask Laurie to do is to sort of step through each of these five questions and give you sort of a little bit of background, and maybe you can decide then whether you want to give direction after each bullet point or wait till the end. That's entirely up to you.
Are you going to explain each bullet point to us thoroughly so that we can? Because it may be better to do just that.
I am certainly hoping to do that.
Wonderful.
She always is very good at this.
So, good evening. Here we are again to talk about marijuana. In 2015, two bills, why is this? Two bills were passed, as Debbie mentioned, that related to marijuana, mostly dealing with medical marijuana. And those two bills, some of which, the provisions have already taken effect. One of the more significant provisions about, that I'll ask you a question about tonight, does not go into effect until July 1st of this year. So these are the five questions, and I'm going to talk about each one and give you the background on it, and then answer questions. And if you have some direction after each, that would be great. So the first question is whether to reduce required buffer distances for marijuana businesses from sensitive land uses. And as you'll recall, the state put in place a 1,000-foot buffer from things like parks and schools, land uses that they considered sensitive. The city, in their own rules, adopted buffer separation requirements, why is this, oh, sorry, buffer separation requirements from residential zones, 200 feet, and then also a 1,000-foot buffer from marijuana businesses, one from each other. So no business could be closer than 1,000 feet. The state now would allow the city, if we wanted to, to reduce those buffer zones to as little as 100 feet around some of the land uses. And those include recreation centers or facilities, childcare centers, public parks, public transit centers, libraries, or game arcades admitting minors. The 1,000-foot buffer is still required around schools and playgrounds. So some of the city's parks, which include playgrounds, would still have a 1,000-foot buffer requirement. There were two maps included in your materials. They're the big colorful maps. One of them shows the current buffer zones and the, the buffer areas, and we've also put in theorem, our one marijuana business, and shown the 1,000-foot buffer from that. The second map shows the buffer zones if they were to be reduced to 100 feet, and that does open up new areas for marijuana businesses. I will say, it's still limited by the requirement that it has to be 200 feet from a residential zone. So it doesn't open up the area as much as you might anticipate just from looking at the map. The primary additional locations would be a couple areas along 68th, and some pieces of Lake Point property that are not covered by the P suffixes. They own a couple of properties outside of the area covered by the P suffixes. Quite a few properties on the plywood, in the plywood supply area owned by the plywood supply property owners would be added. Up near Kenmore Square, Goodman Convenience Store with gas station, and portions of the Kenmore Square property if they were to do some lot-line adjustments for their properties. So those are the areas that would be additionally available, potentially, if a marijuana business wanted to come to Kenmore. Along with the change to the buffer zones, the state also acknowledged that they were, they wanted to give the opportunity for additional marijuana businesses, and particularly because of the new focus on using retail businesses for medical marijuana users. And so they doubled the possible businesses from 11 to 22 in unincorporated King County, which would make it possible for additional businesses to come to Kenmore. They cannot under the current buffer zones. You can see from the map that there's really no other place for them to locate. So that's the first question.
Montessori school.
Pardon me?
Montessori, that's not a school?
It says specifically elementary and secondary schools.
Excuse me. You said that the state increased the number of marijuana businesses potential from 11 to 22 in unincorporated.
King County.
King County.
Correct.
We are incorporated, King County said. How's that apply to us?
It, it, it applies to not only the unincorporated county, but all of the cities within the county that do, were not assigned marijuana businesses. I'm sorry for that confusion.
But we were assigned one.
No, we were not. We were.
How did we get the one?
Through that assignment to King County, both unincorporated and cities that were not assigned specific target numbers.
So if all cities are included in this unincorporated area, what is not included in this?
No, I'm not making myself clear. So many cities in King County were assigned numbers of stores. So Kirkland got some, actually Bothell didn't, their Snohomish portion got some, Shoreline got some, Seattle got a lot. Kenmore was not assigned a retail marijuana business. And because of that, people who were interested in locating in Kenmore could only do that through this sort of unassigned, unincorporated King County number, which included cities that didn't have a business assigned. So any feedback, or do you want to go through all of them and then come back?
Do you want to get an opinion on?
Yeah, I think you've discussed this one pretty well, and I'm afraid that if we go on, we're going to forget and go back. And so it may be better to deal with these as we do each one.
Sure.
So any questions as on reducing buffer distances from marijuana businesses? Councilmember Curtis.
I'd like to leave it as it is with the 1,000-foot buffers, not change any buffer that we have control over.
Anybody else? Deputy Mayor.
I agree with Councilmember Curtis. The only reason we would change these buffers is if we wanted more marijuana businesses. So I'd like to keep it the same.
Councilmember Danuski.
I'd like to keep the buffer the same as it is right now.
Councilmember Sperry.
I could probably at this point say ditto. Yeah, I don't see any reason to reduce the buffers, so I would like to keep it the 1,000-foot.
Anybody else? So I am getting, because I also am in favor of keeping it the way it is, that seems to be the direction we're moving. Is there anybody that strongly objects to that? So then the buffers, from what I'm gathering here, will stay the same.
Okay. All right. So the second question is whether or not to allow medical marijuana cooperatives. As you recall, historically, there were, they were called collective gardens. They were never really authorized in legislation the way they were applied, but it's supposed to be a grouping together of those medical marijuana patients and/or their designated providers, a way to work together to provide the marijuana needed for the patients in question. So there was a court case that determined that collective gardens were illegal, and the city of Kenmore acknowledged that court case and has not pursued the issue of collective gardens at all. But the new state legislation puts in place a new opportunity for medical marijuana patients and their designated providers to form a, what's called a cooperative. And those cooperatives are, really, the rules are quite strict. It can be a maximum of four designated patients and/or their providers. They have to have medical marijuana cards, they can only grow a certain number of plants. They have, the marijuana has to be tracked from seed to sale, or not to sale, seed to use, they have to keep records of what's happening with the marijuana. The one unusual thing about these cooperatives is that they have to be in the residence of one of, either the patient or the designated provider. Now, the other point that's related to this that you would find of interest is that most of the medical marijuana, marijuana business is now supposed to happen at the retail, retail shops. And they have, now there are very specific requirements for doctor certificates, and you have to have a recognition card with your picture on it. And if you have all these, if you follow all these rules, then you don't have to pay the tax that's associated with retail marijuana. Theorem, our one marijuana store, has applied for and received a medical marijuana endorsement. So they will be participating in that program, and they will be able to provide, to collect the information, issue the recognition cards. They would be able to serve those who needed medical marijuana in the community. So the question is whether you want to allow cooperatives, which again are this joining together of patients and designated providers located in a single-family or home or an apartment, it has to be a domicile of, of one of those folks to exist. And then legislation states very clearly that cities can ban medical marijuana cooperatives if they so choose. So that's the second question. And if, if we, if the city takes no action, then a cooperative could locate in the city. In this particular case, the city would need to take action stating that it was not permitted in the city, and we would have to do that by July 1st.
Councilmember Sperry and then Councilmember Herbig.
Well, thank you so much for bringing us this to our attention. I feel very strongly that most people in single-family neighborhoods are not, would not be excited about a marijuana collective being in their neighborhood. So I would strongly support saying no to the collectives, particularly since the medical marijuana is available at retail places now. And I don't know about you, but I just have this kind of ironic picture of people who supposedly need marijuana, how much work it would be to grow all this. It seems very incongruous to me. But anyway, going back to my other point, I don't think that they belong in single-family neighborhoods.
Councilmember Herbig.
I don't see, this would be a whole lot different from people who homebrew in their single-family garage, but I've spoken with a lot of medical patients, and the medical, the user community is frankly not very excited about the retail establishments taking over the medical sales. They don't believe, medical, the marijuana that's used for medical purposes can be very specific, and patients generally have very specific needs that they're trying to find. And the incentive at the retail level, when you're only dealing with one or two patients who need a specific thing, isn't there, the profit motive isn't there, to have a bunch of very specific strains available for people who need them to deal with their sickness. I don't see any harm in allowing people to grow in their, in their domicile. I'm sure there are people doing that right now that we're not aware of, and that their neighbors aren't aware of. And I think it's important that people have access to the medicine that they need. And frankly, the stuff that theorem sells isn't going to address 90% of what the medical marijuana patients require. The profit just isn't, just isn't in it for it. So I'm, I'm totally fine with allowing people to grow the medicine that they need.
Deputy Mayor.
Couple of things I have questions about. You mentioned that theorem down here has received the permission, the authorization to be a medical distributor. to be a medical distributor and provider. And you also said they can issue the identification cards to people who need it for medical purposes. This seems to me to be like the fox guarding the hen house.
Yeah.
If the people who can sell it can give you a card that says that you can buy it, who's regulating? Is this a job that falls- if we were to say this is okay, this, the gardens, for example, the other question I have is who regulates it? Who polices it?
Right. So the way the system is set out, and I'll just give you a brief overview unless you want me to go through the rules specifically, but the way it's set out is that if you are a medical marijuana patient, you have to have an ongoing relationship with a doctor. It cannot be one of those over the internet, get a medical marijuana card. That's not the way it's set out now. You basically have to have a prescription that specifies how much marijuana you need and for some period of time, and you have to constantly be re-upping that prescription just as you would at a drugstore with another prescription. The role that the marijuana store takes on is that they take on the burden, once you bring in your prescription, of creating this identification card. So they take the photo, they produce the card, which you then could use at any store where you wanted to buy medical marijuana, and it provides the exemption from the tax rate. But the- there's a registry. You have to be on a registry with your name and all the information. It's not at all like the- what we've seen with many of the collective gardens, where it's basically a front for giving whoever wants one a medical marijuana card. This is not the case. The medical conditions that you can receive medical marijuana for are specified, are very specific. So from my perspective, it's a much more tightly regulated system, and the only role of the retailer besides selling the medical marijuana is to create the card, once the person is on the registry and has their prescription and that kind of thing.
Okay, once I have a prescription and I go and I get a card that identifies me as a medical user, and I get the prescription filled through Theraum, and I can take this card, go down to Lake City and buy some more?
If-
Is there a database of how much I'm buying?
Right.
Is there control? Who manages the database?
The state. The prescription, all the information from this prescription is supposed to be entered into the database, and that says who you are, what you're authorized to purchase, et cetera, off of the prescription.
Okay, so the prescription, okay, so there's control over people going in and buying it and giving it to somebody else?
I don't know that there's anything in the statute that addresses that. That would be illegal, but-
But are they limited in how much they can buy?
Right, yeah. The prescription says how much you're authorized to purchase.
Doctor who decides how much you can buy?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Curtis?
So, I have- I'm against this one, and I'll tell you why. I have several patients who are on medical marijuana, and they use different brands for migraines than they do for chronic pain, than they do for nausea. And the chance of four people ending up in the same co-op wanting to grow the same strain of marijuana seems highly unlikely. That's one concern, that they just aren't going to be growing the same thing. Number two, when gardeners grow things, they grow it with different skill levels, and so the amount of active ingredient in the marijuana is going to vary from gardener to gardener and from maybe year to year, and whether you fertilized it properly, and a whole bunch of variables. So I actually think you'll get a more consistent product if you buy it at a store where there are more controls, more predictability over getting the right ingredient. Even then, it's pretty tricky. But I think there's going to be better controls than if everybody's growing their own. So I actually am in favor of limiting it because I'm concerned that you'll never know what dose you're getting. And I'd be really interested in knowing more about the list you were talking about that this- because I know there's the- for narcotics, for all controlled substances, I get a list for all my patients. I can look it up online in the state, who gets prescriptions. And I've never seen any marijuana prescriptions on there. So I have no clue how they're actually controlling the amount of quantity that somebody's getting. I'd be more interested, you some information on that.
I will say that I don't- it hasn't been set up yet.
Oh, okay.
So I think, I think the state is still working this process and hasn't completely-
Because they have a really tight system for the controlled substances, and it really is helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Councilmember Januski?
Right now, I do not support the cooperatives. I think giving the retail stores a chance to get going, get the system going is a good way to start. If we end up with Kenmore residents who are coming here begging to be able to grow something because they have a big issue, maybe we reevaluate, but right now, I would say no.
I might clarify just one point, which is that I- it's my understanding that if you were a patient or you were a designated provider, for example, if the patient was a child, that you still have the ability to have marijuana in your own home separately and independently, apart from a cooperative where you actually are joining, again, it's only four, but you're joining together. You have to actually be working, doing the gardening. You can't just contribute money. It does require for a cooperative that you help with the growing.
Councilmember Sperry?
So, if I'm understanding correctly, then a person wouldn't- this would not preclude an individual person from growing their own supply in their own home?
That's my understanding, and I might turn to Rod if you're not sure. I'm the expert, okay. I will- I am 85% certain that is the case, but I certainly can bring back that information.
So, and I guess, I think there's enough access for many number of different places for medical marijuana. I don't see the necessity of having cooperatives in their neighborhoods, and I believe that Debbie is right, that you- that an individual can grow for themselves. So, again, I'm hearing that, no, we should not allow it.
You want thumbs?
We can do thumbs, yes. How many- let's show thumbs for not allowing. All right, that's six. I'm assuming allowing, you're one. Okay, so, yeah, no, no allowing.
In which case then we'll have to bring back an ordinance then prior to July 1st.
All right, next one.
Yeah, and I'll make certain to have the absolute answer to that question.
Individual growing for themselves.
Correct. Okay. The next one may be, or would be moot, the next point, if in fact, since you're not changing the buffer zones, so it's the question of whether to require mailing of notice to sensitive land uses. So the state now is going to require, if there's a new application, that a sign go up, much as we have public notice signs. But the city also could require that they mail notice, if a new application came in, to sensitive land uses in the area. Again, if- this would not be even pertinent unless, for example, Theraum went out of business, and then there was an application for a new marijuana business. So we certainly could take action in this ordinance that we're doing about cooperatives to require mailed notice if there were an application, if the council wished to do so, but it's not a pressing issue at this point.
All right, so I guess that number three is answered then, right?
Well, it's, do you want me to take action and require the mailed notice in case Theraum goes away and then a new business came in, or would you just like to leave the regulations as they stand?
No, I mean, if Theraum goes away and that, I'd certainly be in favor of mailing notices. Anybody else?
Does the state law require it?
It doesn't require it. It's optional. It does require that a public notice sign go up now.
No?
Okay.
No. All right, number four.
Okay, so the fourth one, so the state, as you know, previously, we had marijuana retailers, marijuana producers, and marijuana processors. Those were categories of businesses. They've now added a fourth type of a business, marijuana researcher. And so that person or business would be doing research on the effects of marijuana. I'm not sure, but it's a new category of business, and if the city is willing to allow that business to go into the city, we would add it to the list of marijuana businesses, and then it would meet all the other rules of our marijuana businesses. If we don't take any action, it's not a marijuana business and would not be permitted to locate in the city. The research that this business might be doing has to be vetted by, I can't remember exactly what State Department it is, but it's not like you get to say you're a researcher and then you do whatever you want. It actually is real true vetted research, so.
So that means, like when I was doing my PhD in the 70s, I designed a project to test the effects of tetrahydrocannabinol on dairy cow, because they'll eat marijuana in the field as part of silage. And that marijuana's got a half-life, and it's stored in fat cells. And since milk is mainly fat cells, how much of the marijuana is getting into milk? So that means I could become a researcher again, right?
There you go. But only if the council wishes.
I could research the effect of marijuana on zebra fish. That was another project I had. All right, none of them flew, but that's another story.
You say marijuana researchers. I have visions of the Department of Agriculture being asked to issue federal grants for marijuana research, and I don't think that's going to happen until federal laws change. So I don't know who's going to be funding this. Huh? You don't think-
The feds, the feds own a bunch of property where they grow marijuana and give it to researchers to study the-
Okay, now, if you're studying it, somebody's smoking it, right? So, if we were authorized this, we'd authorize research smoking of marijuana, right? And testing and potency and how high? Yeah, okay.
You can do that. All right, Councilmember Januski?
So, when the mayor starts his research on cows and the effects of marijuana, he could right now only do that in basically the Theraum building. Is that correct, how I heard that? That you could only do this research in the same rules and locations that you could retail?
Well, the way the city's rules are set out, it's not the same requirements for a retailer versus a producer or a processor. So there aren't the same- there are the same buffer distances, but there aren't the other, the 200-feet requirements and those kinds of things. So it's a little more flexible in terms of producers and processors than it is for retailers.
Okay.
I can put a cow in my backyard, right?
It's not in the single-family zones, that's for sure.
I think you'd have to do it within Theraum.
Councilmember Herbig, I'm just going to go down the line.
So there actually is one business in Kenmore that I think might have an interest in having a marijuana researcher at some point, and I think it might be worth reaching out to Bastier to see if this is something that would affect them and their future plans as a naturopathic university. I imagine this might fall into, or might be something that they're looking at including in their curriculum going forward. I could be wrong, but I think it'd be worth checking with them before we make any decisions one way or the other on this, because it'd be unfortunate if we did something that adversely affected them.
I know the old president said absolutely not because of federal loans, the students getting everything else, but you're right, the new president may be different. Councilmember Curtis?
I would like to shock my esteemed colleagues tonight. I'm going to support this. And the reason is marijuana actually is a very interesting molecular structure, and it has potential for seizures and other treatments. And anything that's science, real science, and it's evaluating things, you know, you have a hypothesis and you test it, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, but it could benefit patients, so I would be in favor of this one.
Hey, cows in my backyard are alive. Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. I just want to go back, Lori. I want to clarify, so if we don't specifically allow this new quote marijuana researcher business, then by default, it would not be permitted, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You know, I guess a lot of it comes down to the picture of what a marijuana researcher would actually be like, and-
Tucked eyes closed.
Well, and I just, I guess at this point, I'm not, I don't feel like I want to allow out there, because I feel like without more information about what the rules were, you know, what would that really work like, so.
So, the best information I can give you is the definition. Marijuana researcher means a person licensed by the state liquor and cannabis board to produce, process, and possess marijuana for the purposes of conducting research on marijuana and marijuana-derived drug products. That's the-
Kind of extend of it, huh?
The definition, there are more provisions, but I don't think I can put my finger on them in the next few minutes, but I certainly can bring back more detail about-
I think that would be good, because again, you know, what are we really talking about here? I mean, is this, you know, vetted, or is this anybody-
It is definitely vetted.
Yeah, it can be a researcher, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
I'd be open to considering this. I think Bastier, definitely, we considered them when we initially passed our, or went through our process on marijuana, and I think clearly they have a role in at least understanding, it's worth understanding their position. And so my voice is going to give out, so I'll stop right there.
Catherine McCutcheon?
Yeah, I would just comment, there is a medicine called Marinol, but that is marijuana used for nausea. So there are some legitimate uses for marijuana, and as long as they stay out of teenagers' hands, I am not opposed to using them appropriately.
I did put my finger on it. I found the section. So it says the marijuana research license allows someone to produce, process, and possess marijuana, and it talks about the type of research. It says you can conduct clinical investigations of marijuana-derived drug products, research on the efficacy and safety of administering marijuana as part of medical treatment, genomic or agricultural research. And you have to submit to the Life Sciences Discovery Fund Authority a description of the research that is intended to be conducted. The Life Science Discovery Fund must review the project and determine that it meets their And then a marijuana research licensee may only sell marijuana grown or within its operation to other marijuana research licensees. And it goes on to say that a research licensee may contract with the University of Washington or Washington State University to perform research in conjunction with the university. So it is, I mean, I think it's a legitimate operation.
Question, what's this organization, Life Sciences Research? Is that a state or a federal or a private organization?
It's state.
What is it?
Life Sciences Discovery Fund. Beyond that, I'll have to get that information.
Anybody else? All right, so I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing, I think we better do thumbs up whether to allow marijuana research to locate. I think I'm hearing that there are at least four that are willing to let them locate in Kenmore, so.
I don't hear that. I hear we want to talk to Bastier first before we make a decision.
So if Bastier says no, they're not interested, we don't want them here, is that right? Researchers here, is that the thing? Or to come back to us after they talk?
It wouldn't make any difference for me.
It wouldn't make any difference, no difference for you. I don't think much difference for me. No difference to you? Brett?
Doesn't make difference.
Okay, so the question then is- So the question then is to whether or not to allow medical researchers to locate in Kenmore. And I'm seeing a number in favor, so all those in favor? Yeah, marijuana researchers to locate in Kenmore.
I'd be in favor of it if it's within the university.
Right, and so I'm saying.
Not in somebody's garage.
And I appreciate that.
Doesn't make sense to me.
So all those in favor of allowing a marijuana researcher to locate in Kenmore? Thumbs up. One, two, three, four, five. All right, so five are in favor of it, so I would go ahead and add that one.
So we would have, we would bring back regulations.
Certainly want to know about Bastier also.
Right, correct. And also I'll check on the Life Sciences Discovery Fund and find out exactly where that lodges in the state.
All right, so the next is.
So the last one is marijuana processing by qualified patients and designated providers. So the way the city's rules currently read is that only marijuana processors can process marijuana into products such as concentrates and marijuana-infused products. And the new state rules would allow a patient or their providers to process marijuana into those products as long as it was using non-combustible methods. Again, the city made it very clear that you could not process marijuana in a building that housed a residential unit because of the fear of fire and explosion. We had seen several incidents about that, but this has to do with non-combustible methods of processing and whether or not for medical marijuana, patients or providers, they should be able to do that processing. So it's a point of clarification that we would need to make to our regulations.
So basically you're saying a patient is perhaps growing their own and using that to make brownies with.
Correct.
Is something that we would specifically need to allow.
Correct.
We would also need then to allow therum to.
Bake their own brownies.
Make their own brownies. No?
No, this is only.
Who would be the provider if, since we have said no on number two?
It falls back to the definition of patients or their qualifying, basically their qualifying representatives, I should say, use a different terminology. So, for example, for minors, they have an adult who is their qualified person who can act on their behalf.
Oh, it's not the retailer.
It's not the retailer.
It's not the retailer.
No, and the commercial processors would still fall under the rules that were set in place for commercial processors. This is for medical marijuana patients and their providers.
Okay, so and it's not the cooperatives that we said no to?
No.
Councilmember Irving, then Councilmember Sperry.
Again, I don't see any harm in patients manipulating and making their own medicine. A lot of folks can't smoke the marijuana, a lot of folks need to use salves or ingest it, and I don't see any harm in allowing folks in Kenmore to medicate in the way that works best for them.
Councilmember Sperry.
So are we talking things like what we see where they're picking the buds and drying things and then making it into some kind of edible? That's the kind of stuff we're talking.
That would be, right.
But not where they're doing whatever, I don't know exactly the process, to concentrate like oils and things that can be explosive, that wouldn't be part of this?
Well, it probably could be oils if they were, if it were done in a way that was non-combustible.
Okay.
I think.
And we're also talking individual use, basically?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. This is where my 85% certainty that they can.
It's a word, provider, that I'm stumbling with. It's guardian kind of thing.
Right, it is like a guardian. It's not the retailer, it's the patient.
Only a guardian.
Right, it's defined in the legislation that who the qualifying provider is, but it's, it is either someone is incapable of taking care of their own medical marijuana or it's a child. So they have a designated person who is acting on their behalf.
Okay, fine. Councilmember Dunuski.
I didn't have a question.
Oh, that's the mayor.
Did you have one?
No, I didn't have a question, actually.
I've heard stories about children getting a hold of brownies that are laced with marijuana and do a much higher dose than they can really tolerate. If this isn't controlled by the retail and all the regulations, if it's just the homegrown and home processed, they could put as much marijuana in their brownies as they want. And if kids get a hold of these, or anybody, they don't know what they're getting. There's not, there's no quality control in the process where there would be if it was sold retail, or could be if it was done by a licensed processor.
Councilmember Curtis.
I have the same concern. The dose per brownie or dose per whatever edible you're using is totally unknown and could be at high enough levels that if children got it, it could be a safety concern. So I would be against this one.
I guess I see both sides of this, however, I do think that a patient should be able to do what they need to do to utilize the product in the way that is best for their medical needs. But on the other hand, I sit on the Board of Health, and there is calls all the time from poison control, to poison control, from parents whose kids have gotten a hold of something, gotten a hold of a jelly bean that looks like a jelly bean and is really laced with marijuana. And so, you know, that's got to do with the packaging, and that's something I've been trying to fight for the past year, but Councilmember Irving.
I think we're conflating recreational with medical here a little bit. I mean, what Councilmember Van Ness is describing is something that could happen legally right now without this happening. I mean, if somebody could go to therum, they could purchase marijuana, they could make butter, they could make a, you know, they could bake a brownie, and that's completely above the board. I think this is more talking about like salves and other sort of tinctures and things that people need to properly ingest. And I also think we're sending the message that we know better than you if we say that we won't allow you to do this. I think the people who are sick, who are taking care of themselves, if they're going to learn the processes to manipulate the marijuana into what they need to feel better, I think that they're going to take the steps to do it properly in a way that works for them. I think the message we send if we say people can't do this is, hey, we know better than, we know better than you what you need and how you need it, and we're forcing it into the retail system, which may not be providing you what you need.
Okay.
I think you're at thumbs up time.
Well, I know.
I saw direction on this one.
Yeah, see, I think anybody ought to be able to make what they want for their own selves, it's.
As long as they guarantee nobody eats it, drinks it?
Yeah, see, that's where I'm at, that's where I'm at. But I do understand a person's right to be able to do what they want, whatever helps them, so I got to lean with allowing.
However.
However.
If you make it legal, in a sense, you're encouraging people to do it. If it's, if it isn't authorized in city code, people are going to do it if they want to do it anyway, just like people brew, home brew and do all sorts of things.
Is this something, we have to pass something to in order to allow it to happen? If we do nothing, it doesn't happen?
We won't have any marijuana Nazis running around smelling for brownies.
I think that where we might run into trouble is that we have the requirement that processing not occur in a residence or a building containing a residence, which would, that's where the potential conflict would lie.
See, if processing can cause explosions and fires, how do we know allowing this processing to happen is not going to entail a method that would allow an explosion to happen?
Because it states specifically that it can only be a non-combustible method.
Brownies can burn.
Correct.
It's getting late, folks. All right, so how many, let's see, a show of thumbs on whether we want to allow qualifying patients and designated providers to process marijuana products. Thumbs up to allow. Oh, my goodness. Four. Against. Three. Is that direction?
Yes, thank you. We'll be back.
Mayor.
Proceed with an ordinance, right?
Right.
And then we have to vote on the ordinance.
Correct, and we'll bring back answers to questions.
Hearing too?
Yeah, there would have to be a public hearing.
Mayor, Ms. Ray.
Yes.
I'd just like to publicly thank Lori on this because I know she has been the go-to person on this very rapidly changing issue, and I appreciate the good information that you're bringing forth to help us with this challenge.
Yeah, we really appreciate the expertise you bring to this, thank you. All right, next item. Approve Contract Number 16-C-1543, Grant Funding Agreement with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the Morelands Park renovation project. Mrs. Bent.
Yes. So we would like your direction to say yes, please accept this money. So this was money that we applied for in the 2014 RCO grant round. So we would like to accept that. In accepting this and authorizing the city manager to execute the grant funding agreement, want to also bring to your attention that by doing so means that at a future council meeting, we will need to bring back a request to increase the project budget. And the reason for that is when we applied for the local parks grant, $500,000, we committed the rest of the match for the city's funds for the total project because at that time we did not know that the youth athletic field grant would be available. So being as we didn't know that, we kind of, kind of put all our eggs in one basket, and then we found out later that this other grant was available, which we applied for and we successfully got. But in order then to provide a match, we had to provide an additional commitment. So I guess lesson learned is in the future, if we're applying for multiple grants, we will ensure that the total project budget remains the total project budget. We'll just have to be really careful what we commit to in a grant if we're applying for multiple grants for one project. So that's the reason why we would need an additional appropriation. But that being said, I would certainly ask that for this particular circumstance, that council does authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and be aware that we will be back for an additional request for $105,000 and change in additional funding.
So we're, we are going to authorize the city manager to execute the grant funding agreement. So there's $1.666,925, and $637,525 of that is grant money, the rest is out of our coffers. We budgeted short, so we need to come up with another $105,405 at some point in time. So just as long as we're all clear on that. Councilmember Irving. Councilmember Curtis.
So when we get the two grants plus what we chip in, do we end up with a finished park?
Yes.
Okay. And no extra money, right? We just put in enough to finish the job?
Yes.
Oh, come on, we know that's not how it works. We're still going through design, we're still going through design, and the more, the more progress we make on design, the more we zero in on the actual cost, so stay tuned.
So, cheers looking for a motion authorizing city manager to execute grant funding agreement, Contract Number 16-C-1543 with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the Moreland Parks renovation project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Move Dan Segun. Mr. Smith, you've been working on this for a long time, I was looking at you. All right, move Dan Segun. Any further discussion? Hearing that. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Irving?
Yes.
Seven oh. Thank you.
All right. Next item. City Manager Reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm assuming you'll talk about the fun weekend, so I will not talk about that.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, comments and additions.
I do have one item to talk about. Last week, we put a notice on what is known as a ghost bike that's located on 61st Avenue near the 190th intersection, I believe. It's been there for almost two years, I think August of 2014 is when that ghost bike went up. It's a ghost bike, if you don't know what it is, it's a memorial to a fallen bicycle rider, and in this case Caleb Shoup, who died in March 2014 near that intersection, and he was on a bike. Anyway, we've, we have received complaints about the ghost bike. There's some citizens who feel that it's time that the ghost bike be removed. You as a city council, or those of you who were on the city council at the time, adopted a roadside memorial policy, and at the time, and that was in July of 2014, and the roadside memorial policy put a limit of six months on roadside memorials. It also gives people the option to apply for a permanent sign that says something like, please drive safely, please watch for bicyclists, or something like that, as kind of a way to replace a roadside memorial. And I think it was last year, I believe, I think the Shoups did come in and apply for a roadside memorial sign, and that was installed near that intersection. And in the meantime, the ghost bike has remained, it's been there for more than six months, which is longer than what the policy allows. Also, the policy says that roadside memorials need to be placed on the back of sidewalk. This one is not, it's placed between the road and the sidewalk on the planter strip, it's chained to a tree. Anyway, because of some complaints from citizens, and a small complaint, I should say, a small number of complaints, not a large number of complaints, also some requests from several of you on the city council, we did post a sign on that ghost bike last week saying that we're going to remove it this week. We've been unable to contact the person or persons who were responsible for installing the ghost bike. We've made several inquiries, including the Shoup family, and haven't been able to find or locate the people who installed the sign, so, or installed the bike. So the sign does say that if you, if you know, I can't remember what we said exactly, but it gives the opportunity for people to come, to claim the bike. Anyway, because of that sign, that's generated some interest, some social media interest. There are quite a few people on social media that are opposing the removal of the ghost bike. You as council members probably have received some phone calls about it. So I'm here, I'm bringing this up tonight because we do plan on removing it this week, unless I hear from you otherwise. And if you would like us to keep the bike up longer, we can certainly do that, but I would recommend that a policy change go along with it. I do take the policies that you adopt seriously, and I think it's important that we follow, that I as the city manager, follow and execute your policies. This is a case where I haven't been, but I'm getting to the point where I either need to enforce the policy or get direction from you on whether to change it. Oh, and the other piece of this is my. Oh, and the other piece of this is, my focus has been the, the ghost bike, but I've also gotten questions about the cross and the flowers that are around the base of the memorial sign, and if that should be removed as well. Again, my focus up until now has been the ghost bike, but if, if your intent was everything, including the decorations around the sign, that'd be helpful to know as well.
Councilmember Herbig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I voted for the memorial ordinance that we passed last year that set the limit for unofficial memorials, and at the time, it made a lot of sense to me. I do recognize there are people who are, who want the bike gone, but after hearing from a lot of residents recently, and, and actually hearing directly from Tammy Shoup, I've come to the conclusion that we would be making a mistake removing the ghost bike right now. I understand that seeing the bike makes people uncomfortable, it sticks out, it's a reminder of Caleb's life and his death, and importantly, frankly, of our failure as a society to keep Caleb safe. In large part, because of his and Sarah Paulson's tragedies, we have moved forward, really addressing pedestrian and bicycle safety as a city, but we still have a long way to go. I had been under the mistaken impression, until last week, that the Shoops were, if not enthusiastic about removal of the bike, at least generally okay with it. I got a very clear message from Tammy and Ben last week, saying that they're vehemently opposed to removal of the bike right now. While our memorial ordinance allowed for, you know, the official city indoors memorial signage, these signs blend into the background, they're, they're sterile, they're city signs. It's not a bad thing, it's what they are. The bike stands out, and it demands that people recognize it and what it stands for. It's not blocking any traffic or pedestrians, and I frankly have a strong suspicion that if we do take it down, it will get replaced within a week or two, and there are people out there in the ghost bike community who know very innovative ways to make it incredibly hard for us to remove another bike. And I think we need to ask ourselves, how many man-hours are we willing to dedicate to removing and re-removing bikes from the site going forward? In other cities, ghost bikes have stood for years, there's been one for three years at the University of Washington, where a student got killed, the, there's one down on Second Avenue in Seattle, that's been there for a good two and a half years since, since the death downtown. And they stand there as sentries, and reminders to drivers to be aware of the bicyclists that are sharing the road with them. There frankly, there's no harm in letting the bike stay, except for our discomfort, and there's a lot of damage that could be done by removing it. Emotionally, for people who knew Caleb and his family, and financially, for the city, if a new bike replaces this one. Frankly, morally, for us, if we take away the stark reminder of what happened. The ghost bike makes us uncomfortable, and frankly, we should feel uncomfortable driving past that spot where Caleb was killed. We can't forget Caleb's sacrifice, and the bike reminds us that we have a duty to make him more safe for all, and frankly, we still have a long ways to go before we get to that place where I'll feel like we've reached that. So I would urge strongly that we, that we allow the bike to remain for the time being.
So my understanding is that we pass, the Shoops asked for this ordinance, they reviewed the ordinance, they agreed with the ordinance, and it says right in the ordinance that it'll be, roadside displays will be allowed for a period of six months. I believe it's now been two years. You're saying two and a half years, one place at the, by the university, another one was three. So I'm just curious, how long?
I think until people abandon it. I mean, what's the harm in it sitting there? That's, that's the, that's the question I've gotten answers, what's the harm?
Other than, I don't know that it is necessarily a reminder to people to slow down, as much as it is a distraction. So I'm just curious, why do we, if we pass these, which people ask us to do, are we, why do we just ignore what we pass? Should we just repeal it?
Maybe we need to revisit parts of it, I, I don't know, but I just don't think that now is a, is a good time for that particular situation. Frankly, I think we need to, we can't, you know, governing takes a couple different things, it takes, you know, it takes the rules, but it also takes compassion. And I think in this situation right now, those two aren't lining up, and it might be time to reexamine the rules a little bit. They were passed at a very emotional time for us, just a few months after the tragedies. We've had more time to kind of sit and stew on them, and to see how they're working, and it might be time to look at them again.
And I understand a few months, I certainly agree with a few months, but two years, three years, I, I think that's going a little bit far. And, and again, why do we pass ordinances if we don't enforce them? Why do we pass things that are totally, totally meaningless? And that's the issue I have. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing that it should be removed, my question is, why do we pass ordinances and then don't enforce them?
Well, we passed the Target Zero Ordinance, and then we, when we had a chance to fix one eighty-second, we completely ignored our duty to the people who are walking on that street, because we were worried that it would be, that we were going to make the road too confusing for drivers. So we ignore our own ordinances when it's convenient sometimes, and we ignore code violations sometimes, because they're not particularly high, you know, they're not, we don't view them as important enough to go in and do code enforcement on. We don't stringently march down every street and enforce every little code violation throughout the city.
Nor should.
Well, if we, if they're in the code, then why, then if they're in the code, then why don't we enforce them?
My question is, what other one should we not enforce, which other one should we just ignore?
Well, we take, we, we use common sense here and there, you know?
Right, and so the common sense, again, six months is what the ordinance says, it's now two years, my question is, just fine, how long?
I would say until it's abandoned.
Until it's abandoned.
I, I, there's a harm in letting it sit there, if there's a good argument for, for how it is somehow harmful to the city for it to be sitting there, I could be talked into something. If the Shoops were fine with it, I, I could be talked into it, but there is no harm in the bike sitting there, it's not in anybody's way, it's not blocking any pedestrians, and frankly, people do drive by it and slow down, and that's a good sign to people. We've done good work on that corner, but we still have a lot of work, a lot of work to do as a city.
Milton had one. Milton had.
Yeah, Dr. Curtis.
So I, I know I've had some citizens come and want to have it removed, and come to council and state that, and I said, well, I think the city's going to be dealing with it, so please don't bring it up. So if we choose to not enforce this, then it'll just be brought up in a different way by more people. So I, I, I think if we're going to have a law, we should enforce it, and I think we've been lenient for the purpose of trying to be understanding and caring for the family, but at this point, you know, it's, it's not quite been two years, but it's still been, I think, long enough to, to make the point to everybody who goes by that street on a regular basis.
Can I just add one thing to that? I'm hoping that not enforcing it is not an option. I'd like to either enforce it, or have you direct me to come back with a change in the policy.
Councilmember Danuski?
So I guess I have a real-world application for the, the safety issue of that. The ghost bike for me isn't necessarily the issue, it's that, that memorial is pretty big. And I have a new driver learning to drive in my family, and as he was driving by that, and it's not a road that we drive on too often, he literally looks and goes, what's that? And did not look at the, the crosswalk, and it happened, and it happened in my car, so I think that maybe the memorial sign is a more appropriate long-term solution to roadside memorials.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, I, I feel your pain, being in the car when that happens, but I think it, it does show that, you know, the point of our policy was to give people who have suffered tragic loss, such as the death of a child, a way to memorialize that in, in using the permanent memorial signs, and I think that your example is, is really good, that it can be very distracting to drivers, and, you know, is there a good time for the family? Maybe not, but, you know, I think we do have a, a policy, and I think that it's important that we keep with that general principle of limiting these temporary memorials, and the Caleb's, or the, the family has already taken advantage of having the, the sign done.
Anybody else? So I guess, what are you looking for from us?
Well, if you don't want to change the policy, then my plan is to take it down this week.
All right, how many want to change the policy?
I would consider taking another look at the policy, I mean, I voted for it, and I fully admit, two years ago, I thought it was completely the right thing, I'm just not convinced that the benefits of enforcing it outweigh the potential problems.
Okay, so one more time, how many people are in favor of changing the policy?
Changing the policy?
We got two.
Okay. And the memorial sign, the, the, the flowers and the cross around the memorial sign as well, I'm assuming we're including that? Okay, out of, out of fairness to the family, I'm going to give them advance notice on that.
Oh, yeah.
And try and find who owns the cars, and make sure that gets to the right person.
Okay, so that might take a little while, but if, but based, based on what I'm hearing, the, the ghost bike is going to come down this week. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, cause, city council member comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Sperry?
I heard the hydros, so I'm, I'm interested in hearing how they actually, how the whole thing went, so I'm hoping to hear that later in the report.
Okay, wait, 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 I missed that, what, Councilmember?
Waiting for your report.
I figured you'd give us a report on the hydro races, I just heard them, I didn't see them.
Okay, fine. Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Oh, I had a great time on Saturday with my daughter and wife, and my dad came up from Seattle, and we got to see all the hydros, and I got in fourteen thousand steps by the time I got home, which is great, getting into Disneyland shape, so that's good. I have an update, a couple months ago, we discussed the possibility of going after a ballot box in Kenmore. And today, King County Elections put out their recommendations for where they want to place additional boxes, and unfortunately, it doesn't appear as if Kenmore was even considered at all. We weren't, they had a whole list of places that they were looking at and grading, and sadly, we weren't even on their consideration list, so I'd like to find out more about that. It's not a final list yet, it's only to go through the King County Council. It does look like there will, it looks like there will be a new ballot box going into the Bothell Central Library, which gives some folks more options between Lake Forest Park and Bothell, but I was really hoping for one that I could walk across the street and use, so. I may reach out to Councilmember Nabaski and just see what he knows about it, but it is what it is, just thought I'd update everybody.
Councilmember Herbig, could I ask a question in regards to that? So you, you were saying that the Bothell Library has one?
They are on the list to get one.
Get one, okay.
At least some of the recommendations from King County Elections.
Would it be appropriate to say, hey, we've got this great Kenmore Library?
Well, I think we need a good place with drive-through, I, I, you can make a good argument for, you can make a good argument for, for city, for city hall location, kind of a budding the driveway or something, that would work for folks.
Thank you for pursuing that, I appreciate that. I'm the one who sent the information to them, and I did point out that the library's across the street, and that we had a drive-through already made at the post office, and a number of other things.
Yeah. So Patty, so you requested that we get one. Did you hear back, did you get a rejection, or? Okay.
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing tonight?
Okay, hydro races. They were a lot of fun, they were a lot of fun. A lot of entrance, a lot of noise, a lot of spectators, and they're already planning next year, and they're planning to go to Bothell next year. They're going to go as far up to Bothell as they can. There's a couple of property owners that are worried about spectators trespassing on their property, but they can, they'll work through that. We had a, we had a fairly good turnout there at, at Squires, the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center. Great viewing point, great vantage point, watching them come in, taking that last bend and then throttling down, and then going into the turn, and then just full throttle, trying to get the boats turned around a buoy, and taken off again, I mean, it was, it was pretty good. Daddy's Donuts was there, selling, selling donuts down at the boat launch, and Cully and Ed and Stacy were selling hats and stuff to raise funds for the mural. Very interesting, in that state parks will not allow sales of stuff on their side of the boat launch area. So the people were selling on our side. Thought that was rather interesting, but, and then the other thing was, I think next year, the, they're going to come and ask that the city officially close the river, the slough next year, because we had a big, obnoxious thirty-eight footer or so forth, big boat come down, demand to go through the course and out to the lake. And they had some, some gallon milk jugs strung across there, blocking his progress, and he just got really outraged, irate, I want through, you've got no right to do this, who gave you the authority to do this? I want to see the sheriff, well, the sheriff was out on the lake busy at the time, otherwise I'd have been happy to have that sheriff come up there and give him a piece of my mind, but in any event, so we're going to, we're going to see about, at least for a short three or four hour period, because of safety on the race course, closing the river, so we'll see.
With proper notification.
With proper notification, absolutely. Now, one ninety-two, leave it to one ninety-two, I'm telling you, what a business we have in Kenmore. They are planning a pollution-free, zero emissions kayak beer delivery. They are going to start up at Marymore Park, and they're going to go down the river with kayaks, and stop at all the breweries, and get a half a keg of beer, so it will float, and float them down the river, but pulled by the kayak. And then they're going to meet them in, in our Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center with hand carts, and carry them over to the one ninety-two. So it will be a zero emission, pollution-free keg delivery system.
What did we say about beer in parks, I can't remember?
Huh?
Special events, special events.
Special events, that's right. And they're not consuming it in the park, they're just transporting it through the park, we never said anything about that. Yeah, there you go. The river, yes, not technically a park, I guess. So anyway, the, we went last week to the ST three Capitol Committee meeting, and spoke and thanked them for, for the projects, and encouraged them to keep the projects, and there is a movement on by a large city to the west of and south of us, that want, don't want to contribute to parking, they think all the money for parking should go for their projects, and therefore, there should be no project, parking in ST three. So we're encouraging them to think about the region, and to allow people to come in and get on either the buses, the bus rapid transit system, and get to the light rail so they too can enjoy the fruits of their tax dollars. So we're, we're asking them, please, to, to keep parking in, in the plans. So with that, Planning Commission Tuesday, next council meeting is April twenty-fifth, and it's going to be followed by Transportation Benefit District Regular Board Meeting, which we have not had in a long time. And here's the chair. All right, nothing else coming for us? We're done. Zero emission beer delivery.
That is different.
It is.